Okay, so it's 6:32, so I'd like to call the meeting to order, so let me do a roll call. Carol?
Carol Hofstas, present.
Julie?
Julie Byers, present.
Lori?
Laura Schifrin, present.
And Mike?
Mike Verosco, present.
Okay, and Lance McNally is present, so all of the members are in fact present. 1.2 Chairman's additions and deletions. I have one deletion to make, and that is 1.3 approval of the minutes. I did review the minutes and spoke to Beth where she informed me that those minutes were preliminary and she had not yet completed them yet. So we're going to push that until our next meeting, so that's the reason for it being removed. So while we have a few minutes before our appointment at 6:45, let's go over some work session. So you can probably do this, Beth, do you have an update for the Townsend master plan? You're muted, Beth.
Thank you, I'm just gonna jump in to what agenda item are you on again, I'm sorry, work session?
3.1.
Okay, alright, so we won't be having a representative here from the master plan committee tonight, but we have been corresponding, I have been corresponding with the master plan chair. The last meeting was September, oh gosh, sorry, I don't know, but I attended the last meeting. They're working on updating and incorporating comments that were made on the draft. So, so it, let's see, they are talking about the next meeting, where is it? Next Monday and Wednesday, so that would mean they were going to be meeting tonight, which they're not, and then they're supposed to be meeting Wednesday night, and that's where we're at. I don't know what's going on with the DLTA grant, so we'll need an update there.
Okay, and so we really haven't gotten any of an updated document for us to review.
That's correct.
Okay, and you know, for the board, I thought that once we have an updated document, it probably makes sense to have a dedicated meeting for that, you know, so that we can go through with our comments like we did the last time. I think trying to do it during a regularly scheduled board meeting where we have appointments would be a very, very long night.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to add to what Beth said. I attended the meeting on Wednesday, September 1st, which Beth did as well. And then we were supposed to meet on the 8th, which was in my calendar, and then they canceled that meeting. The meeting on the 1st, we went through a lot of the comments from Dave Chanel, and there were a lot of adjustments that were made to the document, going back and forth, most of what Dave said was added, or they had a reason why they didn't add it, and it's on the, the meeting was taped. So it's not a bad idea to look at their work sessions so that you get an idea of where they were coming from when this was put together. I didn't get any update of any further meetings after the cancellation, did you, Beth?
Well, I did get an email from her, and I'm trying to think, it looks like they were going to meet tonight.
What was the date of that, because they usually just meet at 8:30 in the morning, they weren't doing evenings.
So this is, the date I got the email was September 8th, and she said that they are planning on posting for next Monday and Wednesday, so that would be today.
Right.
Yeah, so I know that's not happening today, so I'm not sure if they're posted for Wednesday night. I can look, I'll check on the town calendar, see if they have a posting up.
And that's all I wanted to add, Lance.
Okay, thank you, Lori. All right, anything else on that? All right, DTLA Assistant Grant update, Beth?
There, there's no update on that right now. I did reach out to Karen at MRPC, but she's been out, she'll be out for a couple of days, so if I hear anything, I'll just move it along outside of the meeting.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is...
Lance?
Yes.
Excuse me, I can report to you from the, I was at the MRPC meeting this past Thursday, and they still have not replaced John Hume. So Karen is doing, I mean, they replaced their, they replaced John Hume with Karen Chapman, but they have not replaced somebody for her job yet, and apparently she's still doing her job. So it, some things may take a little longer than what we anticipated until they can get more staff.
Okay, thanks for that update. All right, 3.3 ZBA referral for 18 Main Street. And this deals with Hanaford wishing to put up some signage. The signage is all going to be non, it's not going to be illuminated, which I think is good. And the, they're basically went to the ZBA for a variance, because they're only allowed to have, I believe, one sign, and they want to have three of them, and they're going to be attached to the building. And there's going to be a hearing, if anyone's interested, on the September 29th. So I don't know if anyone has any comments that we want to pass on to the ZBA? If not, I would just do the simple thing of no comment and return it to the ZBA. You have a problem with that, Beth, or is that all right?
No, whatever the board wishes.
Does anyone wish to make a comment?
I don't know, I mean, I'm assuming they're going, it's not going to be on the road, it's going to be on the building.
Yes.
Right?
I understand it.
Okay, so I mean, I would see nothing wrong with that.
They did have a picture in the package of what the signage is going to look like. It looked like they were going to update the sign at the street, and then, and then just put a welcome sign to, I think, to the left, to the right of the Hanaford sign, and then that pick-up go sign on the other side.
Sorry, I didn't open that one.
If you do, if you do open that one, there are pictures, or drawings of what the signs are going to look like, so.
Thank you, Carol.
They look like typical store signs.
Okay, and then, let's just move on to our next referral, which is again from the ZBA, and that has to do with Main Street, gosh, I'm trying to, 203 Main Street. And essentially, they're looking for a variance so that they can have a deck that is 1.1 feet from a side lot line. So again, I don't have any comments to make on that unless anyone else does. Okay, so if, so probably I should have done it on the last one, we'll do it on this one, then we'll go back. So can I have someone make a motion that we reply with no comment to 203 Main Street?
I'll make a motion that the planning board reply with no comment on 203 Main Street.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, how do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
And Lance is yes. And just for the point of order, or make sure we do the other, and what's, can I have a motion that Planning Board's referral to 18 Main Street, which is the Hanaford sign, is no comment?
So moved.
Okay. Excuse me.
Bless you, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I think you made the motion, so.
Oh, okay.
I'll second it, Lance.
Carol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Lori? You're muted, Lori. I couldn't read your lips, if that was a yes or a no.
I know, I lost my screen, so I couldn't get there, yes.
Okay, and Lance votes yes. All right, so we're at 6:43, and I see smiling Stan Dillis, and he looks like he's at his office by Bad Larry's. Stan? I don't know if, I can't, your audio's not coming through, Stan.
I don't even know if he's hearing you.
Hearing me? Lance to Stan? I remember one time his IT provider was sort of doing an update to the system while we're having our meeting. All right. And a message. Can I do that?
Beth?
Yes.
Lance, if I may, Beth, are we all set with the authorization?
I have no audio.
You can't hear anything?
No.
Stan, why don't you dial in on a phone to get, hold on. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, I thought, I thought Stan was about to come through. He did come through briefly on audio just now.
Yeah, do you want to send him a, I don't know, for some reason, it looks like I can't send a chat message. Can you just inform him that it might be good that he, you know, just uses the audio bridge to come in for his audio?
All right, I'll see what I can do here.
I know you had that problem at a previous meeting.
All right, hold on, Stan, can you hear us? Stan, can you hear us? I'll try to, I'll try to send it to him, hold on.
We could just put up a paper sign.
That works.
I'll try again, Stan, can you hear us? All right. Well, I don't have any material here to make a sign with.
But you, are you, there's no, we can't chat with him?
Listen, Lori, our office is currently closed.
My audio is not working, we know that. Is there a way for, tell him, can you, does someone have a way to do a piece of paper that says dial in? With the phone, here, I'll get a piece of paper, hold on. Can someone look up the number for me while I'm getting a piece of paper?
Yeah, I've got the number here.
Okay, hold on. What's the number? 3-0-1-9, excuse me, 3-0-1-7-1-5-8-5-9-2?
Yeah, does that sound right?
Is there an access code?
Yep, meeting ID.
All right, hold on, 8-1-4-6-1-6-4?
8-1-6-3.
8-1-6-3?
Yep.
All right, so let me repeat that, 8-1-4-6-1-6-4-8-1-6-3?
Yep.
Okay.
And a passcode, 3-9-8?
Hold on, 3-1-8?
3-9-8.
All right, hold on, 3-9-8? Was that 3-9-8? Start from the beginning.
3-9-8-0-4-6.
3-9-8?
0-4-6.
All right, so repeat 3-9-8-0-4-6?
Yep.
All right, Stan?
I got my audio working.
Wonderful.
Okay, so Stan, in the future, if your audio's not working, or we lose you,
Yep.
Just basically, you've got the dial-in number there?
Okay, yep.
Just dial in, and that way you can be on the audio, the video connection to show stuff, but then have the phone audio connection to basically go ahead and, you know, speak.
Yeah, that was going to be my next step, but I knew there was just some setting, I have, I got a new computer, so there was a setting that I had to, I had to find and change, so.
Okay, because the last time you blamed your IT group that they were doing it.
Oh, you got to blame somebody.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, all right, so it is approximately 6:49, let me get my agenda back out. All right, so at 6:49, I would like to open up the public hearing for the Five-Term-Pak Road Site Plan Review Special Permit, which is an proposed 58 new parking spaces and repavement of the 117 existing parking spaces. With that, let's see. Let me first of all introduce the board members, so Carol, will you introduce yourself?
Carol Hofstas.
Julie Byers.
All right, Lori?
Laura Schifrin, and at this time, I need to say that per Mass General Law 268-A, because I am an appointed official to the Planning Board, and I own property at Country Estates, and I am a trustee of Country Estates, I am not allowed to speak at this meeting, so I'll be recusing myself.
Okay, and Lori, do you have any issue, or you think less of me if I just ask Hartley to mute you?
I can mute myself.
Yeah, if you could just, you know, and that way, you know, if you, if you basically are getting all excited, you know, and you're muted, then we can just read your lips.
No, you can't, you're not going to be able to see me because I am very demonstrative, so when I speak, and it's very frustrating for me right now because I only found this out today, and authorization has been granted to Stan Dillis to speak on behalf of Country Estates. Mike Peretti, I believe, he was going to come on. He is also one of the trustees. And I'm sure you're going to take a roll call of who's here, I don't think that he is, but I have complete faith in Stan.
Okay, all right, thank you, Lori. And then, Mike?
Yeah, Mike Verosco, I don't have video right now because I'm on my work computer.
Okay, and then Lance McNally, so those are the board members. At this time, I would like to read the, whoops. So we basically have a virtual public sign-on sheet going. So Beth, along with the, hold on one second, along with all of the board members, we have President Tecam, we have Stan Dillis, we have Ron D., and we have Tammy, and let me just spell Tammy's last name, K-A-S-I-D-A-K-O-S. And so that's our public sign-in sheet. And then Beth, if I notice that we have any other participants that log in, I will let you, let you know, okay? All right, so at this time, let me read the legal notice. In accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Townsend Zoning Bylaw 145/42, Site Plan Review Special Permit and 14565 Special Permits, and Article 8, 14533, the Planning Board will hold a virtual public hearing on Monday, September 13th, 2021, at 6:45 PM to review an application received from Michael Priority, proposing to construct 1,000, I mean, 13,493 square feet of new parking spaces in six parking areas interspread throughout Country Estates condominium complex at 5-Term Pike Road, a Susser's Map 50, Block 57, Lot 0, in the Residential 3 zoning district. The public hearing will be held remotely via Zoom, and the link is, and I'm not going to read the link, meeting ID, blah, 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 passcode, blah, blah, blah. The application is available for review at the offices of the Planning Board and Town Clerk at 272 Main Street during regular business hours or digitally upon request. To Beth, interesting parties are encouraged to attend. All right, so that's the legal notice, and with that, Stan, if you would be able to sort of go over what the proposed work is, and if you need to share a document, I would encourage that, or if you need for us to share it on your behalf, but I didn't know if you wanted to point to things or what.
Yes, do you have it that you can put up, Beth? The PDF?
Yes, I do, just give me a moment, and I see that we have another, Joseph Flynn is with us now, so I will put him on the sign-in sheet. Okay, great, let me see what I can do here.
Okay, while you're.
Do you need, Lance, Beth, do you need to be screen shared as well?
Yes.
Okay, stand by.
And for folks that are here, just to give you an idea of what we're going to do is, Stan's first of all going to sort of present the proposal, then we're going to read mandatory referral comments from other town departments, then we're going to read any written, read any written correspondence that we received from abutters or concerned citizens, and then we're going to have questions or comments from board members, and then following that, we're going to have public questions and comments from the audience. So, you know, we'll try to do it in an orderly fashion so that everyone has an opportunity to speak, but we just want to do it in an organized fashion. Okay, thank you, Beth, for displaying that.
Okay, you're welcome, Stan, is this the correct version?
No, it's a little bit later one than that.
Okay.
If you can't find it, Beth, I can share my screen.
Yeah, I've got it, I was just, let me just go back here, right here.
That's, that's it, yep.
Very good, I'll try to make it bigger, or is that good?
That should be fine, or you can zoom in a little bit.
How did we do this again?
I go into 125. Maybe go back, maybe go back to 100.
Okay.
Or 75 even.
Yeah, I think we better go back to wherever we had there.
There you go, that'll work.
Okay.
So a little while ago, I was contacted by the folks at Country Estates, and Lori, who, Lori came to me with a plan that she had met with a paver out there to add parking spaces, because, what I was, under the impression that they don't have enough parking spaces that there now, so they needed to add. They, they had 58 spaces on top of the spaces they already had. I went out there and I actually found six more spaces than, than they thought they had, so we actually are going to add 52 spaces. And those extra three spaces were what you see way over to the, to the right at the furthest back building, those parking spaces now go all the way to the end of the pavement, so I'm adding a little turnaround lane at that with two spaces off the end of that. And then if you go towards the front, towards Turnpike Road, there's an island adjacent to the first building, where there'll be eight spaces added there. And then at the end of that parking lot, we're going to add 14 spaces. And over by the entrance off Turnpike Road, there'll be four new spaces, and down at the back right-hand corner of the site, there'll be, what is that, is, is 26 spaces added there. The site is relatively flat, it's all sand, and we're just proposing to pitch the pavement towards a recharge trench at the end of the new pavement, which will infiltrate any, any additional stormwater that comes off of there. I believe the entire site is going to be repaved, so they should be able to get all the grading to go where it's supposed to go, and I don't foresee any real issues with that. There were a couple of questions, I know from the Board of Health regarding proximity to septic systems, which we're well away from any of those at this point, and they wanted to know where the water line came in, it comes in off Turnpike Road and goes around the front building and heads for that fire hydrant that's up in the back. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Why don't we go through the comments from the other boards and from abutters, and then open up for questions from the boards, how does that sound, Stan?
That's fine, that's fine, if you'd like me to say my, to answer all those questions at once, or answer them as they come up, just let me know.
Okay, all right, so Mike, are you ready to do a lot of reading?
Yeah, I can do some reading, sorry, I was muted. Just trying to pull some stuff up on my phone, just because they blocked Gmail on my work computer, unfortunately.
Can you, can you pull the information up from the links that Beth sent?
Yeah, I just have to do it from my phone, unfortunately, or, and try to forward it, that's, was my issue. Let me go to this. That was, Beth, that was the one you sent to like 11:50 today, right?
Yeah, and if it's too much of an issue for you, Mike, let me know, and I can, I can read them, or we can have Beth read them.
Let me see how this opens up, I'm trying to see if I can send this, if I can't read this well, then I'm going to probably defer to you guys.
Okay, so Beth, can you be on deck?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, Beth, can you do it, just because it's not zooming in on my phone, it's just keeping the original size, and I might be young, but my eyes aren't that young.
I'm just going to turn on the overhead. I'm just going to turn my overhead light on and I will be right back. So the referral comments, which were, uh, we had late comments come in this, today. Uh, the referral, the referral comments received for five Turnpike Road, Country Estates, special, uh, site plan review special permit for the construction of new parking spaces, a repave of existing parking areas. Um, the assessor's office returned no comment. Uh, the Board of Health returned the following comment. Quote, um, revised plan of September seventh, twenty twenty-one shows no proposed parking over the septic system components. Therefore, the Board of Health has no comments. That was, uh, Rick Metcalf, the health agent, then a Shoba Valley health agent. So the Board of Selectmen, um, offered the following comment, quote, please clarify the number of parking spots. If it is a fifty percent increase, given the spaces near the river, consider stormwater management regulations. Additionally, please consider having plantings, end quote. Building inspector. Um. Okay, this was a revised referral comment received today at two thirty. Quote, I have looked closely at our zoning bylaws to determine if this proposal to add additional parking complies with our bylaws. Townsend zoning by law one forty-five thirty-three parking C five. The parking area parallel to Squanacook Terrace is very close to the required five foot setback. In fact, it's six feet, I believe it says. Townsend zoning by law one forty-five thirty-three parking section C, section six. The plan does not show plantings as required by our parking by law. Townsend zoning by law number one forty-five forty-five floodplain district. The proposed additional parking is not located in the one hundred or the five hundred year flood zone, although part of the property is located in the flood zone. Townsend zoning by law one forty-five forty, aquifer protection district, G, section four states. All runoff from impervious surfaces shall be recharged on site. Diverted towards areas covered with vegetation for surface infiltration to the extent possible. Dry wells shall be used only where other methods are not feasible and shall be preceded by oil, grease, and sediment traps to facilitate removal of contaminants. The applicant's engineer is showing dry wells as the only method of stormwater management. I would suggest having a peer review conducted to evaluate the property's existing stormwater management as well as to review these plans to ensure that this proposal will not increase any stormwater problems that currently exist, if they exist. Townsend zoning by law one forty-five forty-one, Squanacook River area of critical environmental concern. The plan does not delineate the three hundred foot rougher in regard to this application, to the application of this bylaw. Section E states enlargement, reconstruction, or modification of any structure permitted prior to the establishment of this bylaw shall conform to the bylaw. Please ensure that these plans are not within three hundred feet of the riverbank. The property contains two easements that I'm aware of. The proposed plan to have additional spaces does not appear to conflict with these easements, these easements. Conservate, that was Eric Chartrand, um, building commissioner. Conservation Commission responded with, quote, recommend tree plantings, consider stormwater retention feature with added impervious surfaces to mitigate, mitigate for offsite slash downstream impacts, unquote. Jessica Consalvo, the conservation agent. Additionally, the Conservation Commission responded with the following comment. Quote, we recommend the following. Number one, a formal maintenance plan with timeline for recharge trenches. Number two, please show distance to the Squanacook River on the site plan as well as the FEMA floodplain. And number three, mitigation plantings. So they're recommending that. And that was submitted by Jennifer Eaton, Chair of the Conservation Commission. The fire department did not return a comment. Uh, the highway department responded with no comment. Police department did not respond. The water department, uh, quote, uh, open quote, needs to be dig-safed, um, before work is to be done. There are no service lines to the buildings shown on the plan. On the, only the main line is dated the Gion, so water superintendent. The zoning board of appeals returned no comment. Uh, a Butters slash residents comments. Uh, number one, Mr. Joseph Flynn, um, in an email to Jessa, Jessica Consalvo, the conservation agent, dated September eighth of twenty-one attached. And that second one is Susan Ticho, email to Beth Faxon, Planning Board Administrator, dated September thirteenth, twenty-one attached. Let me go ahead and read those next. So this is an email to the conservation agent, uh, received September tenth by, um, Mr. Joseph Flynn. Hello, Jessica, I am in a butter to the Country Estates complex and I am writing in regards to their proposed parking lot plan. As you may have heard at the committee meeting, I have serious concerns about the stormwater discharge from that site. We had serious issues approximately fifteen years ago and worked with the Conservation Commission. The stormwater today is not tied into the Townsend Municipal Stormwater System. It is discharged through an open culvert twenty feet behind my property. A site that is located within the Squanacook River two hundred foot buffer zone. It is also located firmly within the FEMA floodplain maps in an A E zone. We worked with the Conservation Commission years ago to resolve the issue. And at the conclusion, Country Estates agreed to construct a berm to prevent flooding of a Butters properties and contain the stormwater discharge. At the conclusion, they agreed and then never did the work, agreed to. I have serious concerns about the addition of fifty-six new parking spots and the stormwater discharge into the Squanacook A C E C. Uh, I was advised by the Mast D E P and referenced in this plan. And it gives a, a website for the plan. Um, any proposed changes that significantly affect hazardous chemicals into a protected area, I assume, are prohibited. I'll be happy to talk to you about this, give you some history and assist you in a walkthrough. Joseph Flynn. And the second one. The second notice is an email I received today from Susan Ticho. Comments for planning board hearing for proposed Country Estates expansion of paid parking. My husband Neil, until his death on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, and I have been resident owners of Country Estates for fourteen years. We raised our children for twenty-two years in our home on South Row Road. I was four when my family moved from a one-family home in Belmont to a hundred acres on Lock Road, Townsend, Haynes Road now, I believe. Woman across the street was Wheeler Road Pepperell. The road by our home from Townsend Harbor to the Pepperell Town Hall was dirt and or gravel. My education was at Spalding Memorial School, except for sixth grade in the basement of the town hall. In the early years, their school buses transported first through twelfth grade. I graduated as valedictorian in the last class nineteen sixty-one at Spalding. Many changes have occurred over the years. The Townsend Planning Board has been diligent to see that what is necessary is accomplished without changing the small town flavor and peacefulness. Why would Country Estates need to add about fifty-one new parking spaces? Until very recently, no one has complained about parking in the fourteen years I've been here. Wanting a space closer to a particular unit by one or maybe another one or two residents appears to have instigated a plan to pave a large area of previously open space. I see four extra parking, parking spaces plus a recharge trench at the entry parking lot adjacent to and existing into the fire lane. Will that hinder fire and ambulance service? Will that recharge trench affect the old leach field that is presently under that front parking lot? I assume that a healthy tree will be removed to accomplish this area. Many of the remaining trees on the property are pine trees, many, with many dead branches. A number of pine trees have been removed in the fourteen years I've lived here. Stumps from previous large trees were removed about twelve years ago. Why remove a healthy tree for unnecessary paving? Where will the snow go that is normally deposited in this area? For fourteen years, I can count about twenty empty spaces out my bedroom window in the lot between building number one and the dumpsters and the right of way to the home in the back. Several empty spaces are also obvious from my living room window and building number two lot and driveway visitor parking. The eight new spaces plus recharge trenches at the front of building number one lot are high with snow piles much of any winter. Appear very close to a neighbor's fence. Where will the snow go now? The eight space plus recharge trench circled by the dumpsters, I believe, will impede access for shaws to the dumpsters and any large trucks. Uh, in parentheses, fire, ambulance, oil, delivery to building number three and/or the neighbor out the right of way. The circle is adjacent to the fire lane and is also used for snow storage. Will this hinder fire and ambulance personnel and where will the snow go? About twenty-seven spaces appear to replace about eight visitor spaces along the main entry driveway. Most of the vehicles parked in visitor parking, in parentheses, about three or four on any given night, in parentheses, are long-term visitors and or residents who don't wish to cha-change out-of-state registrations. A quote-unquote recharge trench, I imagine, is supposed to protect the Butters and their fences on Squanacook Terrace from runoff and snow. Years ago, a storm drain running to the river was installed from the Melha area to the river to alleviate runoff to Squanacook Terrace. Will this recharge trench complement the storm drain? The new spaces on the lawn of building number two appear very close to the fire hydrant and exit into the fire lane. Will vehicles parked there hinder the fire department and or ambulance? Police and extra personnel usually park in that area along the driveway when an ambulance or fire vehicles are called. As a resident who recently desperately needed ambulance and police, I'd like to have parking as close as possible for them. This is also an area where snow is depositing from plowing. Eight proposed spaces plus a recharge trench are proposed for the rear of the building number two parking lot. This is also an area where snow is plowed when clearing this lot. Will the recharge trench affect the leach field for that building? Solution, she offers, building number one has had no problem with parking during the fourteen years I've lived here. I haven't heard anyone from building number three who has a problem with parking. I've heard of one woman in building number two who hasn't always been able to find a parking space that she likes in the evening. Might be a couple more, but I haven't heard any names. Seems that if residents on three floors and the front one, two, and three units of building number three were requested to park in building number one lot, that all parking problems would be solved. I have faith that the Townsend Planning Board will reject this unnecessary paving proposal. Susan E. Ticho, Wolfrey Ticho, five Turnpike Road, number one twenty-nine, Townsend, Mass. Zero one four six nine.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
You're, you're welcome.
Um, so let's, let's move on. Now, are there any questions from any board members? Carol, do you have any rate to start with?
Um, I guess I just didn't see anywhere. Why do we need to increase the parking by fifty percent? Is there a real need for all these spaces?
Um. Well. I don't know. Can you address that, Stan?
Um, yeah, I, I don't. I don't actually know the reason, the reason they need the additional spaces. I was just asked to create a plan that shows the, the additional, these additional spaces. It's not, it's not an increase of fifty percent, but it is, it is an increase of about forty percent. So, um, the, the powers that be at Country Estates have decided that they need this extra parking. Have exactly why they need it. I, I really can't answer that question, but I can answer the, um, safety concerns. The fire, the fire chief and the, and the police department made no comment. So I, I'm assuming that they're satisfied with, uh, with the layout and the parking and the, uh, existing configuration that they can get their emergency vehicles around, around the site.
And I guess I would comment, Carol, that, um, I don't think it is the purview of the planning board. Um, I think that we need to basically review this to see if that's compliant our bylaws and our rules and regulations. And I don't think that the applicant has the burden of, uh, proving that they need these additional spaces. I don't know. That's my fault. Anything else? All right, Julie?
Um, the only question I had was, I, I, I think it was the second, no, maybe it was the first letter that was read. Um, I think it's in a butter who mentioned something about increased flooding or he was concerned about the runoff. So is that addressed somewhere in the plans or Stan, can you speak to that?
Yes, um, you know, the existing drainage system, we're not, we're not altering that in any way, shape or form. That is what it is. Uh, we're adding, uh, recharge trenches and Eric mistakenly called them dry wells, but they're recharge trenches. And we can get you an operations and maintenance plan on, on how they'll be maintained and cleaned. They're designed to infiltrate the storm, the storm runoff and they are, they're wrapped in filter fabric with stone on the top so that stone can be removed and the fabric can be cleaned. So they'll, they'll, that'll be spelled out in a ma- in an operations maintenance schedule that we get you. So they should, they won't have any, there'll be no additional flow going into the system that's there now. This, we're, we've designed this for these new spaces to infiltrate into the ground on-site independently of what's there.
Okay, so there won't be surface runoff?
No, we're capturing that with these recharge trenches.
Okay. Thank you.
So sort of following up with said Stan, and this is Lance, and while I'm an engineer, I'm an electrical engineer and not a civil engineer. But does this, and I, and I don't see it, but I may not know what to look for, provide the gradient so that I would be able to, you know, determine how the water is, the pitch of the asphalt or what have you, so that I could determine the, the runoff?
Yes, on, uh, on the new paving, I have a, a, a designation of a two percent slope towards the recharge trench.
Okay. Now, does that recharge trench have the ability to contain oil and antifreeze or anything that comes off from vehicles?
Uh, no, not really. It's just meant to infiltrate the runoff that comes off of the, off of the parking.
And, and how far is this from the Squanacook?
That, I will have to get you that information. I, I don't know that, that off the top of my head.
Okay, is it possible to contain, um, you know, affluence such as motor oil or antifreeze in the recharge trench with anything?
Uh, we'd have to, we'd have to do, uh, we'd have to put some catch bases or something in there that would have a, uh, a sump that would, that the, or any oil or anything that came off the parking would be contained in it. And we could, we could certainly look at doing that.
Okay. All right. Um, Mike? Any comments?
Uh, the only, uh, I had two comments because, uh, both you and Julie have asked a couple of questions I had. Uh, the one comment I had was the Butters concern about work that wasn't done a couple of years ago. Are these recharge trenches, are these going to be big enough to, to help mitigate that problem too? As well, or, or is the flow not going to go with it?
I, I don't know what those issues were, so I can't really speak to that, but. But the the recharge trenches that we have will accommodate the runoff from the new pavement.
Okay. Right, and um, it it sounds like you guys are leaving uh, some trees and whatnot. I just don't know the bylaw, so I, um, that Townsend has for the, the amount of live trees and, you know, shrubs and everything to kind of keep that aesthetic look instead of just blacktop. Um, but that was the only comment I wanted to make to make sure that the, that bylaw um, was was followed.
There's only, with this proposal, there's only one tree that will come out. There's really only two trees that any of this new paving will impact. One is uh, at the back of Squanah Cook Terrace, which is a large pine, which we're indicating to save that. There's another tree, it's like a multi-stem Norway maple that's up uh, to the left of, I guess that's building one that would come out. And I I will talk to Lori and the people at uh, at Country Estates to to um, come up with some kind of a planting plan to augment what's, what, what isn't there now. But we'll, we'll come up with a plan to provide some, some plantings.
All right, yeah, I'm not, yeah, it's it's a pine tree. If it's anything like the pine trees on my property, it's probably dead from these droughts, so probably it's not in great shape anyways.
It it's not, it's not in great shape, but it is, it is a one lone tree that's there. So I tried to make an effort to save that.
Yeah, definitely. All right, I'm uh, I'm satisfied with that. Thanks, Stan.
Okay, Mike, um. So, um, do we have any abutters that wishing to make any comments? Or anyone from the public?
Hi, my name is Michael Peretti and I'm one of the trustees at Country Estates.
Okay, what are you coming in on as Mike?
Um, I'm coming in on my phone.
Oh, okay.
Are you able to hear me?
I can hear you just fine. It's just that you didn't, usually when someone comes up on phone, I see a participant with a phone number and I don't see anyone.
Oh, okay.
Like, uh, but go ahead, Mike.
I join, I join through Zoom.
Okay, oh, I see, Michael Phi S twenty-one Ultra.
Yes.
Okay, I see you.
Okay, um, I'm actually the applicant for this job with the paving. Um, I walked the property with um, shadic paving, trying to find more spots. Um, what we're finding now is that the capacity of most of these units are two people um, two per, per unit, which um, is giving us some strain on the parking situation. Um, right now, we have, I believe it's a hundred and twenty or so uh, parking spots. I was trying to get it closer to where we need it to be, which would be two parking spots per unit, which would be a hundred and sixty spots total. Um, this proposal that we had put in was not going to take away hardly anything with trees and I heard something about trying to replant. Um, I'm actually trying to do a pavilion in one spot um, where we will be putting a lot of uh, trees and nice shrubs in there to kind of give it more of a homey feel.
So, Michael, can you work with Stan then so that he can update his? Well, Stan has already said that he's going to get together with um, um, you guys and then basically update the plans, the plans with plantings.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that was it at the moment.
Okay, Joe, I see that you have your hand raised.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you're probably one of the most polite people to actually raise your hand.
Well, I, I'm, I'm a, I do Zoom calls by uh, for work, so uh, I'm used to it. So I am in the butter. I live at fourteen Squanah Cook, uh, excuse me, twelve Squanah Cook Terrace. And the issue that I want to bring up, um, would you allow me to share a screen here for a moment?
Um. Uh, sure, um, what, I'll, uh, what's the material you're gonna present?
That the, the, it's, it's actually a FEMA flood plan, flood plane map.
Okay.
And I would like to show you what the existing stormwater uh, what the existing stormwater discharge, where that exits right now.
Okay, uh, could you do me a favor, um, Joe, and send that plan to Beth um, after you presented so she has it as a part of the record?
Absolutely.
Okay, does any board members have an issue with um, um, Joe presenting the FEMA flood plan? Carol?
No.
Um, Julie?
No.
Mike?
No.
All right, and Lance is know as well. So Hartley, if you're there, could you control, uh, could you turn control over to Joe?
Uh, is this Mr. Flynn?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll do that right now. Hold on, please. Okay, you can now go ahead.
All right, can you see this screen?
Uh, no, I can't.
How about now?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so what I'm showing you here is a FEMA uh, flood plane map. And uh, as you can, you can see, this is my property denoted by the uh, the, the little pixel there. And it is located directly within a zone AE um, flood plain. The point I want to make is that the dis, the current discharge from the stormwater uh, at Country Estates comes out approximately right here, twenty feet behind my property in this wooded area where my cursor is, if you can see that. It's an open culvert that comes out. Now, some years ago, we had a huge problem with Country Estates with their stormwater. Uh, several times they drained their pool and and uh, they did it at a point where my neighbor and I had just reseeded our lawn. And as a result, all that stormwater, the parking lots at Country Estate, if you looked at the original proposal, that access road to Country Estate, there's currently no curbs on that road. So all the stormwater runs directly off their property and onto the properties at Squanah Cook Terrace and continues down into the Squanah Cook River. The runoff at uh, that we, that we encountered some years ago was strong enough that it washed all of the seed that we had just done off our property as well as plantings and everything else. It came through in a torrent and it actually flooded my basement. It flooded my neighbor's basement. Um, and so today, that area where the open culvert is for their stormwater is, is located directly in the Squanah Cook River uh, Protected Zone. It is the Squanah Cook River area of critical environmental concern. Um, and and my concern is the addition of almost fifty percent new parking spaces. Uh, and I suffer the same thing you do, Mike. I'm, I'm an, an electrical engineer, not a civil engineer. But I can't understand how the addition of that many new spaces, the contamination from, from wastewater washing across the parking spots is not going to increase the amount of hazardous chemicals that are introduced into the uh, Squanah Cook River Buffer Zone. So I've talked to the Conservation Commission about this. When we had the issue years ago, um, it was established that that culvert is in the Squanah Cook River Buffer Zone. You can see that the area is in the uh, in the flood plain today. And uh, I do not believe based on, albeit not civil engineering, but just general engineering concepts, that the recharge trenches um, in an, in, in a parking lot situation where there are no curbs and there is no stormwater management today, uh, that water all washes down across the parking lots and onto the properties located on Squanah Cook Terrace. Now, uh, uh, it, forgive me, was it Stan?
Yes.
Had, had mentioned earlier that there's no impact to uh, uh, septic systems. Yet, if you look at the additional parking spots that are very close to the properties located on Squanah Cook Terrace, their leach fields are in their backyards. And so that is gonna have an impact on them. The addition of those spots is going to have an impact on additional chemicals being, being uh, an additional uh, quantity of stormwater uh, being discharged because it's gonna hit the current storm drains before it hits your discharge area. And that is gonna increase the quantity of water that's discharged directly behind my property. So I used to have a vegetable garden located in the back pot of my property. I was advised not, not to have that years ago when we went through this problem because of the, the, the waste oils, the antifreeze, the, the brake fluid, the transmit, all of that stuff. Uh, basically um, flows downhill from that discharge area and across my property right where I was planting uh, vegetables. And I can't do that anymore. So the agreement so many years ago was that the Country Estates was gonna build a berm to, to contain the, the runoff and the wastewater. And they never followed through with that. So I think I have a legitimate concern that why should I expect things are gonna be different today with a maintenance plan or a follow-through? I don't see it. I don't care about the additional park, that they're gonna put in additional parking spots. My concern, my concern is how is it gonna affect me? How is it gonna affect the Squanah Cook River Protected Area? Because today, it's discharging into that ACEC. And it's wetlands and it's in a flood plain. And so I think that uh, originally when I read this plan, uh, the comment in there was that there were no stormwater discharge concerns. And that's just not true. And water rushing across at volume across a uh, a recharge trench, uh, you can't guarantee me without a berm or a curb there that all that water is captured. It's just not gonna happen. I don't see how it can happen. Only water sitting there on that is gonna get captured. But um, that, the magnitude of the storm or the, or the uh, the amount, the quantity of water, uh, it, it is, it's just not gonna, it's not gonna pick it up. And when I look at the uh, the, the Squanah Cook River, the Squanah Tisset stewardship plan, it clearly states any, uh, any alterations that affect the quantity or the quality of stormwater discharge have to be brought into consideration for that area of critical environmental concern. And when I look at the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Quality Engineering uh, Stormwater Handbook, it says the same thing. And it calls out this, this uh, proposal because it's gonna affect both the quantity of water put into that stormwater plan today and the quality of it because the addition of extra parking spots is gonna introduce uh, almost fifty percent more affluence into that area. And correct me if I'm wrong, again, I'm not a civil engineer. So that's, that's pretty much all I have to say and I'll, uh, I'll, I'll stop sharing now and let you guys uh, um, let you guys get back to business.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Did I ask Joe a question? Was there ever a, was there ever a plan for, for that um, berm or anything, or was it just verbally that we'll, we'll build a berm there? Was there ever anything submitted for people to approve or to build something by and it just didn't get built or?
Um, eh, to the best of my recollection, Stan, it was, it was an agreement that we came up at, with, at a, with Country Estates and at a conservation hearing, uh, Conservation Commission hearing. But at that meeting, the conservation agent at that time had done a walkthrough and uh, they, they fully agreed that that open culvert today was sitting in the ACEC and the buffer zone for the Squanah Cook River.
We'll, we'll have to take a look at that. Um, I was, I was unaware that there were any existing drainage issues. So we'll take a look at that and see, see what we can come up with that will hopefully protect your property and maybe fix that issue that exists.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Um, are there any other um, abutters or someone from the public that would like to make any comments? Okay, with that, so let me just sort of um, um, provide some comments and, and Stan, um, um, let me know if, if I miss anything. So first of all, that um, we're going to update the, the um, plan to basically show where plantings are. Um, that we're going to address any recharge from oil um, or any sort of particulars, antifreeze, transmission fluid or what have you in the recharge trenches?
Yep.
Uh, we're going to also show where the, the buffer zone is for the Squanah Cook?
Correct.
Um, and um, we're also going to put in place an operations plan.
Correct.
And maintenance. And also, um, you know, I, if I remember, the building commissioner made the comment that um, um, well, first of all, any other comments from any other board members in terms of stuff that needs to be updated on these plans?
I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick question? So do you need to get a permit from the state for the wetlands or stormwater management?
I don't, I don't believe so, but some of that, and what we find out when we do some investigation of the existing system.
Yep.
Okay, so um, the other thing that based upon the comments from the building commissioner, and I'm gonna pose this to the other board members and would like their comments on that, is um, I think that it would probably, based on the, the history here and everything, that we have a peer review engineer review this for runoff. I mean, this does not have to be, um, nor do I expect it to be a major project in terms of like reviewing a stormwater permit. But I think that just um, having someone with the expertise to after Stan updates these plans to review them, um, to see if there's any major concerns. I don't know, um, any comments from any other board members? With that, could I entertain a motion to have Beth basically put together a set of estimates um, for someone to review this? This is not identifying anyone. We just want to find out. I don't think it needs to be a, a, a big deal, but I think that we need to have someone um, from a peer review standpoint to go through this. And if you agree with that, please make a motion.
I'll make a motion to have um, Beth look into having this peer reviewed for all the purposes that you mentioned earlier, Lance.
Okay, um, do, um, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And how do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Um, Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verusco, yes.
And Lance votes, yes. So um, I think the, the game plan here moving forward um, is to have Stan update the existing plan. Um, and um, and uh, and we've already gone through that and basically have Beth look at getting some estimates to just to perform a peer review on the runoff so that we can make sure that what we have, um, you know, doesn't create any problems and, and cause any, any detriment to our, our Squanah Cook River. Um, Stan, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, I think that's it. I have a, a shopping list here of things that I need to address and we'll take care of those things and then we'll go from there.
Okay, it sounds good. So with that, I think that we will need to continue the public hearing. Um, how much time do you need, Stan?
It's probably actually going to take me the next meetings in two weeks. That might be a little overly optimistic for me to do all this investigation and, and come up with some stuff. So, but let's, why don't we continue with to your next meeting? And then I'll know well in advance of that if I'll need more time and then I can just ask Beth to, I can just give you a written request to extend it to the following meeting if I need more time.
Do you think your existing plan is enough for a peer review to just say, you know, looking at this material, this is my estimate and how long it's going to take me to review this or what have you?
Uh, yeah, but I, I'd actually like to meet with the, the Country Estate folks first and come up with some decisions about what we're going to do.
Okay.
Because we may, we may decide to change things.
Okay. All right, so really Beth can't, it doesn't make sense for Beth to get any estimates until she has something from you that someone can look at and provide an estimate on.
I, I think that would be prudent.
Okay. All right, and so Beth, when is our next planning board meeting scheduled for? You're on mute, Beth.
September 27th is the next meeting scheduled.
Okay. And so can I have a motion to continue the hearing until September the 27th at 6:45?
I'll make a motion to continue the meeting until September 27th, 6:45.
You should probably say continue the hearing.
Oh, continue the hearing. Sorry. To September 27th at 6:45.
Excuse me, I had a sneeze, so I had to mute real quick. Do I have a second, Carol?
I'll second it.
How do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike Verasco, yes.
And Lance votes yes as well. Okay, thank you so much, Dan, for coming. And thanks to everyone, Mike and for, Joe for providing comments.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so let's get back on our agenda. All right, can we get Lori back here? All right, let's move on to 3.5. So Safe Roads to Schools update. Carol?
Um, I attended a Massachusetts Safe Roads to School networking call. So they, they picked different topics and this one was arrivals and dismissals at school. And since I've had firsthand knowledge of picking up grandchildren at the Spalding School and the Hawthorne School, I could talk about how long, how lengthy sometimes these pickups are. So one of the things I talked about grants for sidewalks and walkability studies, which we've already done. And hopefully this year with the buses, I know for a fact when the kids went back to school before, when they went back to school before September, you know, before the summer break, everybody, every parent was picking up their kids and dropping their kids off at school. So it could be a lengthy process getting in line, especially the elementary school. If you've been down Main Street by the Spalding School, it could take a long time to go around the block. And, in the Hawthorne School, either the kids just race out of the building and parents either parked in the library parking lot or parked at the Hawthorne School and kids just wandered out to car. So it was kind of a and kind of dangerous because as soon as parents picked up their kids, they were shooting out of the parking lot while kids are racing through there. But I know my daughters put both girls back on the buses, so that should alleviate a lot of the parents picking up and everything.
All right, and our grandson is on the bus now.
Yeah, and a lot, a lot of my daughter's friends have put the kids back on the bus. So that should alleviate a lot of the pickups at the school.
Well, it sounds like you've been a great choice to participate with us then.
So, so yeah, so we had long discussions about that.
And so what are some next steps that are going to be occurring?
Well, we've already done some of the next steps is the walkability studies and looking at the sidewalks grants. That's what they talked about was grants for sidewalks and walkability sites, which we've already done. So they just do different topics for each of these networking calls. This is like the first one.
Okay. Anything else, Carol?
Nope, that's it.
All right, anyone have any questions for Carol? If not, then let's jump to 3.6. Beth, MVP up to me?
Oh, yeah, um, I think that, again, that, that we, they should be a meeting for department heads. And that's something that should be set up. I guess I can go ahead and set that up. There are probably chairs of committees and department heads, so I can go ahead and set that up via Zoom and let you know when that is. There's not much more going on with that.
And then the 3.7 walkability and bikeability?
Okay, yeah, there's a little update there in your folders. I don't know if, let me just pull that up. I think you can all, you can all read that. Okay, so Sherri Bean, who's the principal planner working on the walkability study, updated that the study is currently being put together. And she is still, I guess she's looking at having it complete by the end of September, so that's good. Yeah, the report write-up will include existing conditions, public input and recommendations, as well as the following maps. The study area, the sidewalk inventory, traffic volumes, crashes, inventory of road facilities and recommendations. And there is also an update on the intersection study that I can read to you. So this is an update from George Snow. He is the principal transportation planner at MRPC. And he reports that the intersection traffic study of the Main Street Route 119 at West Elm Street slash Canal Street intersection, it isn't, it's going to include an examination of the existing conditions such as the offset geometry of the intersection, traffic congestion analysis, safety analysis, pavement condition analysis, and a set of improvement alternatives for Townsend to consider. The study is about seventy-five completed, a percent completed. And he is looking to have the draft report available for the planning board to review by the end of the month as well.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
All right, so Beth, are you up to going through the notices from Townsend and other towns? Because I don't want to see poor Mike staring at his iPhone or his Android trying to do this.
No problem. Okay, brief summary. Notices from Townsend slash other towns for the meeting today. Townsend zoning board of appeals, the notice of public hearing, which we have already reviewed for 203 Main Street is on September 29th at 6:15 PM. This is actually a special permit and/or an appeal of the building commissioner's determination for construction of a deck within the side yard setback of a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The second notice of public hearing is Townsend zoning board of appeals for 18 Main Street. This is a petition for variance for the new signage proposal at Hannaford. It's also September 29th and that is at 5:45 PM. That is virtual as well. Lunenburg Plan Board posted a notice of public hearing. It's already gone by, but it was for a stormwater management permit for 360 Flat Hill Road. That was on August 23rd. The Shirley Planning Board sent a notice of decision for a site plan review at 55 to 57 Great Road, which was approved. The Shirley Planning Board also sent a notice of decision, which was approved, for multifamily housing in the mixed-use district. The Shirley Zoning Board of Appeals sent a notice of public hearing for a comprehensive permit application that will be on September 20th at 6:00 PM. The Pepperell Planning Board sent a notice of decision. They didn't indicate what it was for, but it was granted with conditions at 50 Main Street in Pepperell. The Groton Planning Board sent a notice of public hearing on September 9th, 2021 at 7 o'clock, a site plan review for the Whitney Pond Wells Water Treatment Plant. The Groton Planning Board has also sent a notice of public hearing for September 23rd at 7:15 PM. And they are proposing to rezone five parcels of land from general business to multifamily development. I'm sorry I didn't put the address in there, but that's in your packet. The Groton Planning Board also sent a notice of public hearing for September 23rd at 7 o'clock to consider amendments proposed by the Board of Selectmen to allow the retail sale of marijuana in the town of Groton.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
Those are all scanned in your packet.
Yes. One more thing, 4.2. So we have a joint meeting with the Townsend Housing Authority?
Yep. That is coming up on, oh, sorry.
October the 14th at 7:00 PM.
Perfect, yeah. So you reviewed all that. They're, they're beginning to work with the consultant on the housing production plan. The meeting will be with the Townsend Housing Authority, the planning board and the housing trust and the consultant. So it'll be an introductory meeting. And if anybody has any questions, they can just email me on that.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions from any planning board members? And if not, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
How do you vote, Carol?
Yes.
How do you vote, Julie?
Yes.
How do you vote, Lori?
Yes.
And how do you vote, Mike?
Mike Verasco, yes.
And Lance votes yes. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone, guys.
Good night.